Out of the public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on February 26, 2019 to the Home News Tribune and the clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall 78 via Street, New Brunswick. We'll call Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Sodowsky. Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Villas. Mrs. Shukitis. Mrs. Spencer. Mrs. Morell. Dr. Caldwell. Here.
Here.
We have it for him.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise with black salute.
Ready salute?
President's flag of the United States of America. To the republic of America. One nation, one government, one liberty, one justice, one law.
This is a reminder that the closeout Board of Education meeting will be held on Thursday, June 27, 2019, beginning at 5:30 PM at the New Brunswick High School in the auditorium. The regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 16, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM here at the New Brunswick High School Auditorium. We have several presentations this evening, starting with the recognition of the Spelling Bee. Thank you, Steve.
So every year, New Brunswick schools implement scores of programs which prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders. I am proud to introduce colleagues and partners to showcase a few of these meaningful experiences for our students. I would like to begin by inviting our Supervisor of Humanities, Ms. Danielle Master-Giovanni, to come to this stage to recognize some of our special students. Good evening, and thank you for coming out tonight and last night in support of our students. We had a great turnout for the Spelling Bee, and we would like to recognize our first, second, and third place district winners. In third place, we have Justin Rodriguez. I don't see Justin, but if he's here, he can come on up to get his certificate. Oh, there he is. In second place, we have Ilani Peralda. And in first place, we have Maria Marino. Let's give all of our winners one more round of applause.
I had the opportunity to travel with a group of students from Woodrow Wilson School, maybe about a month ago, to Hungary. And I must tell you how impressed I was. It was a great learning experience for myself, and my charge was really to work with Sister Cities of New Brunswick to build more experiences for our students. Currently, we have an exchange program with our elementary schools. But myself and Mr. Mike Tubman decided that we wanted to expand this, and Mr. Tubman brought this idea forward. And we had a great meeting to also start this experience with our high school students. So we are actually working on that now, and maybe some other opportunities for our teachers for experienced learning. But I must just first tell you about the students who actually went to Hungary and represented New Brunswick in such a positive way. I'm not going to say much, but I'm going to definitely invite Mr. Mike Tubman up to the stage and the students when he calls, so they can share their experiences with you. Thank you. Tubman?
My name is Michael Tubman. I'm the Director of the Sister Cities Program. For those of you who don't know, Sister Cities was started in 1956 by President Eisenhower as a way of connecting American cities with cities abroad, so there could be a mutual understanding of customs, language, history, in hopes that we can all learn from one another and realize, even though we're different, we're all the same. I was fortunate enough to go on this trip with this fantastic group of junior ambassadors from Woodrow Wilson School. And I'll let them speak about their trip, because it's much more impactful from them than it is from me. So Iris, I'd like you to lead off.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Iris Reyes, and we will be showing a video first that we prepared for you guys for you guys to enjoy.
My experience was amazing. to visit a different place, different culture. My homestay were really nice people there, really kind. Their mom was always asking if I needed something, the dad was always making jokes. Mrs. always tried to include me in stuff. And Naomi, my homestay girl, she always tried, we always tried to communicate, which was kind of hard, because she didn't really speak English. So that was fun. to the top of a church, and it was a very long walk up, but I made it, which was, I was really happy about that. So, yeah. Now, Sienna will talk about her experience.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Sienna Cancelle, and I am one of the same students who traveled to Hungary. I loved my trip to Hungary. It was the best. Hungary was such a wonderful experience. I got to hold a snake, and I was kind of nervous. I loved the school there and also my homestay family. My homestay family was very, very nice, and they cooked every night, and the food they made was delicious. It rained a lot, and it rained a lot in Hungary, but it was mostly warm. The clothing is similar to ours in the United States. The malls are pretty big and very nice. One of the malls I went to in Hungary was the Forum. I loved everything about the trip. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ajic Kruhme, and I was lucky enough to become a junior ambassador for the Sister Cities Student Exchange Program. I loved the trip. I would do it again if I could. My favorite part about the trip was probably the school, and it was really different from American schools, because the students actually called the teachers by their first names instead of their last name. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Manny, and just recently, I have returned from Hungary, which is the Sister Cities Program, and I have, and I had become a junior ambassador ever since then. I realized that they have many differences from here, at the school. For one, the schools have, after each break, they have, wait, they have 10-minute breaks during, after each class, and in the beginning, they have a 20-minute break before the class. During this, during this week, they could, they could buy stuff in the cafe, get ready for the next class, or just talk with, talk with their classmates. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Mia Santos, and I'm one of the students that went to Hungary. During this experience, I was able to do something that I never thought I would do, but, and I was holding a snake at Hortage in the bird hospital. I also went out of my comfort zone by trying new foods. The school's really nice, because they actually had a store, like, a little shop with food that I never thought a school would have. And I really liked my host family, because they were really caring and funny, and they always made really good food. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha. I'm one of the students that went to Hungary. I really enjoyed it. It was really fun. I really liked the people. We grew really attached to each other. One of my favorite things was the zoo. We got to see, like, different types of animals, and I even got to ride on a camel. The people that I stayed with were really nice. They made sure that I had everything that I needed. I really liked the girl Anna I stayed with. She was really nice, too. The school, I really, I enjoyed the school, because they had four different art rooms, and we got to do, like, any animal and different type of art. Overall, I enjoyed the Hungarian trip, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity to go. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the Brunswick Sister Cities Association and the Woodrow Wilson Junior Ambassadors, I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Woodrow Wilson School, our chaperones, Ms. Lattiser, Ms. Pap, and Jim Horvath, who gave their time and dedication, and you inspire, you prepare, you empower these kids to be future leaders of our country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tubman, for that presentation, and thank you to all the junior ambassadors for not just our district, but the City of New Brunswick. It's a great program, and you're an ambassador to the city and to the school district, no matter where you go. It could be the next town over, but you always represent where you come from when you go out. And next, we'll have the presentation for the New Jersey School Development Authority logo finalist acknowledgement, Mr. Ladulcha.
Good evening. The New Jersey School Development Authority, also known as the NJSDA, was in the process of developing a new logo for the corporation. In that process, they reached out to a few districts who recently opened new schools. The NJSDA is the agency from the state of New Jersey who helped us build this facility, as well as Red Shaw School and the Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts. So they asked us to reach out to the students of Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts and help them develop a logo in the logo contest. And tonight, I'd like to recognize two students who were selected as finalists in the logo contest, and I'd like to bring them up here if they're in the audience. So two finalists were Brittany Chavez Merlino. And Isbed Velasquez Dolores. So there's a strong possibility that these, both of their logos are, would be incorporated into the final design that the SDA chooses. So I'd like to bring them up. Is anybody here? Brittany, or? No? Okay. Wow. Mr. Maureen, I'll give you the losing. He's here? Okay. Come on up.
Dr. Lennox Small, to recognize two other groups of students. Dr. Small?
This school year, we entered a very unique partnership with Rutgers University called the REACH Program, Rutgers Early College Advantage Program, based in the School of Arts and Sciences at Rutgers University. The students were enrolled in a college course that was taught in four units by four distinct university professors in the areas of express early writing, history, and sociology. The class was conducted from 3:30 to 5:00 PM, from every two days from October through April. As a result of their sacrifice and efforts, the students have earned three college credits from Rutgers University. Their credits are transferable to any college or university in the country, and this experience will certainly be with them for life, and it saved them a lot of money, because they earned it free. The students received their certificate during a special ceremony on Friday afternoon from the staff of Rutgers University. But at this time, I would like to call and acknowledge all the students who were part of the group. So the following students, when I call your name, please come on stage. Zalma Herrera. Edlin Madaba. Janet Macedo Cordero. Alan J. Martinez. Brian Palmer Medina. Carly Mendoza. Diana Navarres Vasquez. Nadine Ortiz Aron. Gabriel Letero. Maria Reyes. Nida Reyes. Remy Platas. Jody Sosa Zalea. Linda Tarkus. Vanessa Torres Olivia. Brian Ventura. Joanne Ortiz. As you can see, we have a very large group here, so I'm going to ask the two of our scholars to take a moment to come to the microphone and talk to us about your experience in the REACH Program. Don't come all at once.
Hi. Excuse me if I stutter a little bit. I did not plan anything to say anything. But it was a really great experience. I think it really did prepare all of us for college. We came in kind of expecting some things and came out learning a little more than we thought we would have, definitely. Yeah, like I said, it was a great experience. It kind of gave me a feel like, oh, wow, I really, there's a life after high school. So it helped us prepare to just how to read and write. Obviously, we all know how to read and write, but just do it a little better, I guess, on the college level, how to annotate, and I think it was, it really helped, and it was a great step towards college. Thank you.
Sorry, my voice is little, so I have to speak well. But going through the REACH Program has been a tremendous experience for me, so a lot was required for me, and I had to make a lot of sacrifices, but I definitely learned a lot of virtues, how to manage time more efficiently, because that's, yeah, I mean that. It also taught me how to be creative when I write, and how to stimulate my imagination, because I'm sure everybody had writers' block before, but it definitely told me that whatever that we faced, it was a prerequisite for what we encountered in college, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity, and thank you.
So once again, before I close through this group, I just want to reiterate that there were approximately, there are approximately 10 districts in the state of New Jersey, including New Brunswick, who's part of this program. With this is our first year in the program, and we have, they sent to me today, one of the largest classes completed. So please give these 24 scholarships.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Part two for me. When we have our curriculum instruction meetings in Ms. Scousers' office, we're often surrounded by architects in our office that are described by the words "belief". And the success of our students in a national history day competition is a result of the seeds of belief that was planted by their teacher, Ms. Infante. Last year, during our first year in this academic tournament, the high school made it to the state finals. This year, the students participated in regional competitions at Monmouth University, the state finals at Wayne Patterson University, and last week spent four days at the national finals at the University of Maryland. Just to put it in perspective, for the state of New Jersey, when you include all the students at the junior and senior levels and in all the different categories of this tournament, five thousand students in the state participated in national history day competition. Fifty registered to the state finals, and 77 represented New Jersey at the national competition. The national competition had a global feel to it. All 50 states were represented, in addition to DC, Puerto Rico, Guam, America Samoa, Korea, and Singapore. Along the way, our students received an award from the League of Historical Societies in New Jersey, were recognized by the State Department of Education and the Amistad Commission yesterday. And several hours ago, they were invited to participate in a lecture series at the Memba Budin House Museum located in Piscataway. They're going to go on tour. In which their documentary will be viewed by the public, and they will discuss their research. At this time, I want you to meet these scholars. So please come on stage. Soraya Lopez Perez. Michelle Ortiz Moreno. Ashley Garcia. And Bernice Rojas Rivera. That's okay, she's a future scholar, she can come up, it's okay. You know what they say, set up a travel, the lady should go. So we have these four scholars and one future scholar. So I'm going to... Their documentary is entitled, "We're Going to Stick with the Hungry Theme." They won, they were state winners in the documentary division. And their title was called, their top title of their project, excuse me, is called "Hungry for Freedom." I'm going to let them talk in a little more detail.
Hello, my name is Bernice. And we were able to conduct this research project where we learned how to work as a team and gain new skills. I want to give a big thanks to our teacher, Ms. Infante.
Thanks, Charlie. And I want to thank you for dealing with us and helping us to improve this journey. And I also want to give a big thanks to Dr. Small and Master Giovanni for giving us this great opportunity.
Hello, I'm Michelle Ortiz. So our documentary was about the Hungarian Revolution of 1956, in which stimulated thousands of Hungarians to flee their nation in order to sell their bonds for what they were even the British. We're going to show our... Are we going to show our document?
Yes.
Over the last 243 years, millions of immigrants have entered the United States in search of freedom and enhanced opportunities. In 1956, the country opened its borders to Hungarian refugees when their country was in the midst of a revolution where thousands of innocent people were killed and wounded. As individuals fled to find a safe place to go home, Urbentik and Jersey became an unexpected haven for Hungarian migrants. During World War II, Hungary formed an alliance with the Axis powers and found itself on the losing side of the war. After the war, the changing Hungarian government was vulnerable to the influence of the Soviet Union, resulting in the Hungarian People's Republic. A one-party socialist government, the Hungarian People's Republic began forcing strict move policies. While the government promised that the regulations were for the greater good, many people felt that the opposite was true.
That was probably the worst time of my life because there was no food, there was nothing around.
Hungarian citizens believed their voices were being censored by the communist government. Religious practices were monitored and limited. Family businesses were confiscated, farms were turned into collectives, and those who lived in the countryside were forced to give up their land. Jobs were assigned by the government and opportunities were scanned. The education system was altered to reflect communist values, and the teaching of the English language was completely removed in some schools.
The history we learned was totally distorted from the, from the point of view of Marxist-Leninist interpretations of history. So history teachers had to teach exactly what was there. There was no, no choice of what they would be teaching.
The Soviet Union punished soldiers who challenged their role, and the sentences were either imprisoned or killed.
That was at the university that taught me in Hungary. If you were in a second year, when, when one of our classmates, you know, just disappeared. We didn't know what happened. So we find out later that basically he was making up criticism and then also took some of the pictures off, you know, in the dormitory. And, you know, somebody reported this to, you know, and then, you know, he disappeared.
Because of import restrictions, food was scarce, and families moved across the country. As their distress increased, people began to take action. On October 23rd, 1956, students marched through the streets of the capital city, Budapest, demanding an end to the Soviet policies that controlled their lives. Yelling their demands through microphones, protesters carried their nation's flag with the Soviet hammer and sickle cut out. They tore symbols of communism from walls and publicly beheaded a statue of Joseph Stalin. The marches made their feelings clear. They did not wish to be part of the Soviet Union. The protests escalated when Hungary's state protection authority, known as the AVH, began to fire into the crowd. A student who was shot by the AVH was lifted up by those around him, wrapped in the Hungarian flag, and carried through the streets as a symbol for their cause. This was the start of the 12th revolution. News of the student protests spread like wildfire across the country, leading to the collapse of the government. Hungarians began to rise up, creating militias to oppose the AVH. The Soviet Union was angered by the opposition and sent large tanks into Budapest to intimidate the protesters and regain control. The civilians, unwilling to back down, attacked the tanks directly, but they could not win. Although many Hungarians hoped the revolution would end with their freedom, they were ultimately crushed by the Soviet Union after 12 days of fighting. In that time, the Soviets had caught approximately 2,500 Hungarians and re secured control of the country. With unbearable conditions at home and citizens in prison or executed for their participation in the revolution, many Hungarians felt they had no choice but to flee their nation. Risking their lives in search of safety, they first traveled by flight, train, boat, or bike to the country's border. Individuals were then required to escape through holes in the Iron Curtain, a physical barrier that separated countries influenced by the Soviet Union.
The Iron Curtain, which was basically a no-man's-land, actually, with fence, and that was the same where they actually put, you know, those mines in. So it wasn't that easy to, you know, go to the border during the revolution. That was much easier to escape. But otherwise, it was very difficult to escape.
Once you crossed the border and in Austria, Hungarian refugees could apply for visas to live abroad. With the support of its citizens, the United States opened the store to displaced refugees and allowed over 30,000 Hungarians to enter the country. Upon arrival, many Hungarians rented a joint base in McGuire, the Exile curse military facility in southern New Jersey. As they disembarked from the plane, they were welcomed by cheering Americans. After processing, they were transported to Camp Kilmer, an old army barracks located in Urbentik.
Everybody was excited about us. I mean, they were like, welcome to the earth. Like, yeah, welcome over here. I mean, I think we were like a big deal.
Americans offered refugees donations to ease their transition and brought clothes, bedding, and toys for the children. The Hungarians selected by the US were considered the pick of the refugees by Vice President Nixon. The New York Herald Tribune reported that 34% of the incoming Hungarians had skills needed in American industry, while another 18% were already engineers, doctors, and professionals very much in demand. Triumphantly, Camp Kilmer became a place that allowed for many Hungarians to begin to find their success. University students were given the ability to continue their studies and were offered scholarships, while many local corporations offered jobs to the refugees.
They were highly intelligent, educated people who were coming out, so they were able to go into different sectors and begin to work.
Moving from temporary living in Camp Kilmer into houses in Urbentik and nearby areas.
Hungarians settled in Urbentik because of the ability to find work. Urbentik had Bristol Myers Squid and Johnson &amp; Johnson, and both had the ability to have a foreman who spoke of English and Hungarian, and his team would speak Hungarian, and the new Hungarians were extremely hard workers.
Many settled into their new lives by starting careers and families. Multiple Hungarian churches were established to create places for worship, something denied under the communist control back in Hungary. Urbentik was finally becoming a new and permanent home for those who had not so long ago felt they would never feel at home again. To this day, the city of Urbentik holds an annual Hungarian festival. Summer set in French streets closed down as the local Hungarian population shares their culture with all those who come out to celebrate. Food is served, art is displayed, music is played, songs are sung, and dances are performed. For those few days, all of Urbentik is Hungarian. We all come together to share the experience of another culture. It is wonderful to watch the celebration of diversity and the coming together of different cultures each year. But the Hungarians were not the last large group of immigrants that came to Urbentik nor America. According to statistics, over 35% of Urbentik's current population was born abroad, with approximately 27% of the whole community lacking US citizenship. Many refugees continue to pursue freedom in the United States of America. However, the opportunities that Hungarians were granted are not available to all refugees. While other groups have triumphantly fled conflict-stricken nations in hopes of obtaining asylum in America, their request has been denied. Out of 22 million refugees worldwide, in 2018, the current US administration capped the refugee admissions at 45,000, which leaves millions of individuals destitute. Tragically, the debate about who should be granted asylum continues to divide our nation.
Before we close, can this Master Giovanni and Ms. Infante, I know I saw you somewhere, can you please turn it on stage? Ms. Infante, are you here? So what you saw was a part of the competition. It was a combination of this documentary. It was a written research paper. And in addition to that, there was a defense-like presentation to present their research and defend their position. So I give to you the 2019 State of New Jersey National Finals, "Hungry for Freedom."
Good evening. My name is Marty McCoy, and I am the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources for New Brunswick Public Schools. Welcome. It's fitting that this part of tonight's meeting comes after we celebrate all of our students. Every freedom fighter, every civil rights leader, every president, every physicist had a teacher. Every nurse, every neurologist, every architect had a teacher. Every artist, every musician, every rapper, every educator had a teacher. And so tonight, I have the privilege of celebrating our educators of the year. And as we celebrate them, I'm going to ask them to remain on the stage. Come, we're going to shake hands, we have a gift for you. And just keep moving to that part of the stage, and we're going to take a group picture. And then we're going to celebrate our retirees. Is that all right? Oh, come on, it's only 7:50. Can we just give another round of applause to all of our students that we celebrated? They are without question the reason that we do what we do. And those of us who chose this profession, we chose it for one of two reasons. And all of the educators in the room will co-sign this. We became teachers because we had teachers who were so fabulous. And we were so inspired by them that we were like, yes, I'm going to be a teacher. Or... They see, they are laughing because they know what I'm going to say. Or we had teachers who were so horrible and horrific that we said, "I'm going to be a teacher just so I will not be like that." Never somebody's laughing. So let us begin the celebration. From Lord Sterling School, Leah Antonio. Dr. Johnson, are you ready to join us? I have on glasses, but they don't work for all the way out there. They just work from just right in here. There she is. Let's give another round of applause to her. From the middle school, Candace Rampling. Now let me just say this before we continue, but I have to take my glasses off so I can see you. That's a shame. Now you have... Whether you know everyone or not, you have to keep that same level of energy up. Because it's a terrible feeling to be like, "Dr. Aubrey Johnson, Marty McCoy." So, okay, are you with me?
Yes.
You promise?
Yes.
Okay, we want everyone to feel celebrated tonight. From McKinley School, Tamara Caruso. Yes, you all follow her so well. From Red Shaw School, Stacy Cicero. Somebody threw in a little extra over there. I'm not mad at it for that. From Roosevelt School, Christine Serino. Christine's also a retired leader. From Woodrow Wilson School, David Holmes. Their administrators are coming with them as well to celebrate with them. From Lincoln School, Sherry Oliver. She gave herself a room. Just in case you guys didn't come through. She said, "Woo." Just in case. Hold your applause for this one because this is ALC Joseph Crete. But hold your applause because we recently found out that Mr. Crete was also recognized statewide for the work that he is doing with the program at the ALC. So please, give it up for Mr. Crete. I can see you with or without my glasses, Mr. Crete. From Lincoln Annex, Joseph Macho. Don't lock them down, Mr. Kyoto. From Livingston School, Jennifer Aloski. From Paul Robeson School, Amy Saggy. From New Brunswick High School, Joseph Garcia Julba. Coming on his behalf, principal of the high school, Mr. Ken Rattler. He's teaching tonight, Mr. Rattler said. Those doggone teachers. From Health Science Technology High School, Dulce Wexler. Dulce, a practice word. Dulce Wexler. Let's give all of our teachers of the year, our educators of the year, a round of applause. Mr. Clifford, you're being summoned to the stage to be in this picture. We also have the honor this year in New Brunswick to have the Middlesex County Educator of the Year. And she's already on the stage. Please give a round of applause to the Middlesex County Educator of the Year. The first time New Brunswick Public Schools has ever had this honor, Ms. Jennifer Aloski. We also have an award for the Support Staff of the Year. From McKinley School, Ms. Antonee Small. Yes, please, absolutely. Right over here? Oh, you can hear me. Act like you can't hear me, please. Let's give one more round of applause to all of our educators of the year, their administrators. Come on, Miss Rodriguez. We will wait for you for this photo op, absolutely. Our educators work hard for us all year. And when we're not thinking about them, they are thinking about us. And so we appreciate that, and our children appreciate that. And that's beautiful. And as they exit the stage, I am going to welcome to the microphone my boss, the Baddest Superintendent in America. Please give it up for Dr. Aubrey Johnson as he celebrates our retirees.
Again, let's just give a round of applause to our teachers of the year. I just penned a couple sentences just to say to our teachers of the year, which I think is really heartfelt. We know that teaching is a noble profession that shaped the character and the caliber and the future of our students. We appreciate you for touching the hearts of our students. And of course, we know that the curriculum is so much necessary. However, the warmth and the teacher's love is a vital element for the growing soul of our students. Again, thank you so much. To our retirees, for many years, you have devoted yourself to educating children. Your retirement is a celebration not just for all the years you put in the classroom, but for every child you helped along the way and the knowledge that was imparted. You will forever remain in the heart of the children you have touched. You have given your time and your talents in many different ways that made a difference in the lives of others. On behalf of myself, Kevin, and the Board of Education, we say thank you. Your teaching will forever be treasured. Your contributions in students' lives can never be measured. I am sure that each student will blossom beautifully because its seeds have been sowed by a teacher and nurturer like you. I want you to understand that even though you are retiring, the values and knowledge that you have given to your students will never retire. Retired means giving up a job, not giving up the right to teach. I hope you never stop teaching kids the important lessons of life. However, you can now look back with pride at all that you have accomplished. At this time, now comes for some relaxation. You can reminisce now, but you can also say, "No." No more lesson plans to make or no more late-night grading papers. No more teacher-parent conferences or long staff-boring meetings. No more observations and evaluations. And no more last-minute changes. These last couple days, take a moment to stroll through the hallways in the schools and listen carefully. You'll hear in every nook and cranny, in every corner, the whisper, "We'll miss you." While enjoying each moment in your life and the many days to come, I'm sure you will remember that the best part of teaching is touching the hearts of our students. You are retiring from one of the most important jobs in the world. But even after you retire, I hope you never stop sharing your wisdom and teaching the kids what's important. Happy retirement and congratulations to all. Thank you. We are... Uh, Dr. McCoy did remind me that we are recruiting substitutes in the district where we have a need. Uh, we may negotiate a different rate for retired teachers, so make sure you see us, okay? What I'd like to do right now is to actually call up our retirees. I'm going to do it in chronological order, from years of service, from least to most. Some retirees are here with us tonight and some aren't. Those who are here, please come up to the stage. I'd like to recognize Sophia Gershler, three years, eight months. Sally Dawson, nine years. Mary Beth O'Connor, nine years, seven months. Margaret Brown, nine years, ten months. Rosemary Osin Snyder, eleven years, four months. Mary Feder Purcell, thirteen years, ten months. Jamie Fuller, fourteen years, two months. Jimmy Cook, fifteen years, eleven months. Catherine Schwint, fifteen years, seven months. Catherine Saar, sixteen years, ten months. Elizabeth Cantillo, sixteen years, five months. Nancy Lusas, seventeen years, ten months. Monique Hale, seventeen years, six months. Megan Djeranawa, seventeen years, nine months. Brenda Guns, seventeen years, nine months. Julia Polo Blanco, eighteen years, six months. Josephine Morales Chico, eighteen years, seven months. Carol Graham, eighteen years, nine months. Maximino Aquino, nineteen years, one month. Robert Dumstein, nineteen years, seven months. Jeremiah Clifford, nineteen years, eight months. Loretta Russell, twenty years, one month. Richard Powley, twenty-one years. James Fixter, twenty-four years, ten months. Janet Pepparo, twenty-five years, seven months. Gloria Lethenberger, twenty-six years, ten months. Claudette Grant, thirty years, four months. Vicky Abdul Salam, thirty-five years, nine months. Jennifer Davidson, forty years, nine months. And our last retiree, Dorbis Delphine, forty-six years, five months. Again, thank you for your years of service. And as I stated, keep on teaching.
Three, two, one. Awesome. Before moving on to item number four and before everyone rushes out of here, I just did want to thank you all again, all the presentations. And I did just want to acknowledge Dr. Small. That was definitely a tear-jerker documentary. And I'm sure our students will continue to succeed. Thank you to everyone for your contributions to our district. So moving on to item number four. I'd like to have a motion to accept the minutes from the May 14, 2019 meeting. Mr. General, vocal.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedazin.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item number five, superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
Yes, for the month of May, we had 150 suspensions for cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our student enrollment presently is 10,385. Our student attendance is 95%, and our certificated staff attendance is at 95%. I just want to close again, just to let everyone know that what you saw today, our pockets of excellence happen throughout the district. Our mission, our vision is to prepare, empower, inspire lifelong learners and leaders. And I hope today you were able to see the work that our teachers and our administrators and our collective cabinet and board are doing. I wanted you to actually get a feel for their voices and see their voices. We still have a lot more work to do, but we are moving in the right direction. So again, I want to thank everyone for their commitment to the development of our children. And we won't stop because they deserve the best. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. If we could please have a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
We'll have a good night.
Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedazin.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevita.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer. Mrs. Pirella.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you. Item number six, student representative report. Ms. Zoe Shire. Okay, we will move on to item number seven, the facility committee report. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Madam President. We didn't have a facilities meeting this month, but we'll report the following month.
Thank you. Item number eight, the policy committee report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, Madam President. Policy committee, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Item number nine, the athletic committee report. Ms. Sevilla.
Thank you, Madam President. As we talk about the pockets of excellence, I would just briefly, we'd like to highlight some of the accomplishments that our student athletes have done over the years. So just briefly, we'd like to say how the boys soccer team won division championship as they also received all-conference honors. We have the boys basketball team who also earned all-conference. We have, I would like to also highlight how we had our first girl wrestling team and they made first, actually first in the champion. And all three of them actually won county champions. And all three of them also finished fourth in the state of New Jersey. So, and all of them, I believe, they're freshmen. So we're excited to see what they're going to accomplish next year. I would like to also, for the spring season, we had baseball finishing with a record of 912, an improvement from previous years. I just would like to kind of think how, definitely would like to highlight how during the banquet, the coaches, and thank you for seeing some of the coaches here. They really were just reflecting on the students and how much sport, we talk about them being scholars, how sports, it's also helping them in developing their identity. So, thank you to them. And I would also, that would be all. And I would like to have a motion to approve this month's reconciliation.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedazin.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevita.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Pirella. Mrs. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. Item number 10, the curriculum committee report. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to go back to item number six, the student representative report. Ms. Shire.
Hello. So first, I want to start off. The MBHS STEM competition, the MBHS Science Department in collaboration with Rutgers Science Department held the Build It Better Challenge. Approximately 30 MBHS students competed with each other in competition as they worked collaboratively to create several projects using materials provided and solving problems presented to them during each phase of the competition. On May 24, families took pictures of MBHS and health science technology students who were attending the prom prior to them going to the prom taking place at the Estates at Farrington in East Brunswick, New Jersey. The MBHS and Health Science Technologies Prom took place again at the Estates at Farrington in East Brunswick. The prom attendees had a wonderful time, dancing, eating, and sharing stories and making a lot of memories. The high school seniors' field day took place May 28, even though the weather did not cooperate. The festivities were scheduled to take place outside on the fields. However, the planning committee was advised by Mr. Redler and Mrs. Sushenovich to be proactive by moving the activities inside. The field day was different, but just as engaging with music, sports activities, and food, including hot dogs and hamburgers, being served inside the high school's building. Project Pride took place in the auditorium May 30, 2019. Local inmates spoke to students through Project Pride, a program through the New Jersey Department of Corrections that was initiated by high school student assistant counselor, Ms. Flores. Project Pride brings minimum custody offenders from a state correctional facility into schools to talk about their personal experience with drugs and alcohol. The main purpose of Pride is for youth to hear firsthand the results that alcohol and drug abuse have on a person's life and consider these consequences when faced with making personal choices. The Festival of the Arts took place in New Brunswick High School, June 5 through June 14, 2019. Dance, fine arts, graphic design, fashion design, choir, orchestra, and band presentations and performances demonstrated and exhibited their talents and skills. This event is always wonderful. However, the art performances get better each year. Students from New Brunswick High Schools were introduced to New Brunswick High School during the 2019 freshman orientation for the graduating class of 2023. Schools that came to the high school were from the Middle School, McKinley School, Lincoln Annex, Paul Vorwissens School of the Arts, Woodrow Wilson School, and the Greater New Brunswick Charter School. Students received a welcome presentation in the auditorium by Principal Redler, Ms. Lugo, and Ms. Smith. After the presentations, students took place in a student-led tour of the high school and enjoyed lunch in the courtyard where the GJ, clubs, activities, and athletic groups presented extracurricular opportunities that are available in the high school. Tours were facilitated by the student council and avid students. During the evening of June 11, families of incoming freshman students came to the high school for dinner information session and a tour of the high school to familiarize the parents and guardians with the high school and as well as academic and social expectations. This program was well-received by all attendees. Student peer leaders provided the tours. Scholarships and awards will be presented to senior students who were graduating on June 25, 2019. Students enrolled in the REACH program, graduated from this program during a ceremony that took place in New Brunswick High School. Twenty-four students received three college credits from Rutgers University as a result of completing the REACH program taught by Rutgers professors in the high school. The JRTC Military Bowl will take place in the high school cafeteria on June 21. New Brunswick High School's graduation will take place on June 23, 2019. Congratulations to all New Brunswick High School graduating seniors in the year. Very, very exciting. And lastly, the 2019 MBHS yearbook has been released. The yearbook committee would like to present the board members and Dr. Johnson with their yearbook to thank them for their services and education for New Brunswick public schools. So thank you very much. Madam President. Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Shire.
I would like to introduce the bill's student representative for upcoming school year. Go ahead. Jayden Martinez, can you please come over here?
Thank you, Ms. Shire, for introducing our newest student representatives to the board. Ms. Martinez, it is a pleasure to meet you. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
So my name is Jayden Martinez. I'm a junior, a rising senior. Oh my gosh, I'm nervous. So I am class president since my freshman year, class of 2020. I am a three-sport athlete, and I can't wait till they start.
And does that conclude your report, Ms. Shire?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Shire, for always giving us such a thorough report. And Ms. Martinez, we look forward to working with you. Ms. Shire, thank you so much for all your contributions to our board meetings, and we wish you all the best. I'd like to move on to item number 10, the curriculum committee report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, Madam President. The curriculum committee met on Tuesday, June 11. There were no presentations. We did have an update by Mrs. Lee Nieman, giving us the status of our jazz band and our marching band. She also provided us with information on where we stand with our musical instruments. She also talked and introduced to the board members that were there the two new hires that she did for the new music program. And with their help and the help of the other music teachers in the district, we look to take our musical program to the next level. And hopefully, which always has been my dream, to have our kids represent our school at the National School Board Conference. And that's small goals that we got to go through to get to that large goal. And I think we're in the right track for that goal. We also have resolutions which have been added to the consented items. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. I definitely think that your goal is attainable. Moving on to item number 11, Public Relations Committee report. I would like to just again commend Ms. Shire for always giving us such a thorough report on our district. I know that Lord Sterling Community School is having their annual carnival tomorrow. We have so many events happening, graduations we look forward to. And if you have any other inquiries on events happening, please feel free to check the district website. I'd now like to move on to item number 12, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report from Dr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one item, which is actually a big item. The commission, over the last year and a half, is undertaking a project of developing a state-of-the-art conference center, which is completed now and actually it's almost fully booked. And so I haven't even seen it yet, but I think in the next couple of weeks I'll see it. But it's an opportunity to do, we could even hold the New Jersey School Boys Conference there. So the commission is going to start doing a lot of programs and other things. So we'll make sure that we get those that want a tour of it. So that's been a very, very exciting development and be pretty much one of the nicest in central New Jersey. So that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The item number 13, President's Report. I just have to mention that our district never ceases to amaze me. We have so much talent, not just with our students, but with our teachers. For us to be able to have a teacher recognized for the first time as Teacher of the Year from Middlesex County is such an honor. And we always strive for excellence in our district. I did also want to acknowledge the fact that this is Pride Month, the month of June. And I just, in everything that we do in our district, I hope that we manage to prepare, empower our students to just always have acceptance, always be kind, and just live and let live. Everyone deserves to be respected. And so I hope that in our process of educating our students, we just encourage them to continue to be accepting of other people's life choices. And that will conclude my report. Moving on to item number 14, public comments. If there's anyone in the public that'd like to make a comment, please state any of your answers.
Yes, on the. I want to mention that in the presentation of retirees, you left me out. I don't know, that might have been a slight error. Anyway, I just want to kind of like, closer. I mean, for the past, you know, 35 years ago when I started teaching, I said, I was doing computer programming and I didn't like it. My, I didn't like it because I was dealing with machines. And I said, I said that, I made a choice. I said, "I prefer to influence lives instead of machines." And so I said to my father, you know, and he says, you know, I've always been teaching and I love teaching and it's one of those jobs that I go to work one day and, you know, you come home happy. I was always happy coming to school. When I come to school, I sang, coming into the room. I, you know, I was very happy, very lucky. I think I'm one of the few people who always enjoyed his job, his or her job. I mean, all the years that I was a teacher, I had always enjoyed my job. Now, the last eight years in New Brunswick, with your Mr. Kaplan's machine, I really had to endure a, you know, I would say a very difficult tenure. Okay, I was with, I was in school with Mr. Diaz. And what happened was that, I'll tell you what the history was. One day I came to school and I had to leave after my takeoff the next day. And I said to him, you know, I have to stay the day off because I have to go to court to handle some of my business. So from that day on, he heard that I had some other kind of business. And from that day on, he decided that he wanted to suppress me. A black man, un moreno, he would say. Okay. Now, when John, I mean, he always found. Now, when John, I mean, he always felt wrong. I complained, I protested, came in front of this board, and, you know, nothing happened. Anyway, what really happened, the history was that he wanted to become superintendent of the district. And I don't, he was passionate, and I kind of, you know, well, I keep my calm, but I, he may might have blamed part of it on me because what used to happen is, I'm a math teacher, I was a math specialist at Roosevelt School. And every year, math came in as very good scores, my specialist. I mean, when I'm there, I made sure I closed all the holes, made sure that the students did well, and they always did well at Roosevelt. But then, every time at the end of the year, it's like, hmm, Arnold Anderson didn't deserve to be, whatever, he had some fault. But I always felt that it was like, oh, oh, he's doing well enough. Okay, so, all right. Anyway, so, at the end of that time, he's leaving, Mr. Kaplan is leaving, and Mr. Diaz is the superintendent's in force, and they decided that, oh, they wanted to stick this guy so. So, they brought me up on charges, an incompetent, and I was like, a hundred and eleven times. Oh. So, I was spending six months, and, and so, you know, but, you know, I went to England, and I said to one guy, I said, you know, do you think that they would have done this to me? He said to me, you know what? In England, they would never have done what they did to you. In England, they said, they would never have done what they did to you.
Mr. Anderson, you've reached your five-minute limit.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, because there's no one else. Okay.
Mr. Anderson, excuse me, you've reached your limit. If there's anyone else in the audience who'd like to approach the microphone for a comment, please do so now.
All right. So, my challenge, anyway, to this group, is to be kind. Challenge to this board is to be kind. I think that after Mr. Kaplan came to this district, it became very mean. Okay? And just as we had that word of warning, that somebody, one of those teachers up here, she said kindness is more important than wisdom. Kindness is more important than wisdom. And my challenge to this board is to find some way to be kinder or to handle themselves kinder than they have. Okay? Now...
Thank you for your message, Mr. Anderson. There is someone else that would like to approach?
I don't think there's anybody.
Mr. Anderson, I am here, sir.
Oh, you're here.
Yes, sir, I'm here, sir. But don't worry, we're good, sir.
Just give me a minute.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I've been in New Jersey, I've been in New Jersey, and I know the fabric of New Jersey.
Mr. Anderson, please stop.
I'm not stopping. I'm sorry.
The fabric of New Jersey.
Mr. Rattler, stop when you're told by the board president, please. We don't want him to have any issue here. Mr. Rattler, you're yielding your five minutes. That's our rule, five minutes, and you exceeded it. Are you going to speak? Yes or no?
I asked this gentleman if he wants to go next.
Excuse me?
I asked this man, he said he wanted to go next. So, I'll go after him.
Please state your name and your address.
Please excuse me, I'm crying. My name is Kevon Parker. That's K-E-R-R-O-N-H. For you. Please, how much time do I have to speak? Or I speak. Sir.
You're scheduled for this evening in a closed session. If you want to yield that to a public session, then you have five minutes to speak. But the way it's scheduled tonight, Mr. Parker...
Yes, sir.
Is you're scheduled to come before the board to petition. You know what it's all about.
Yes, sir.
You have an attorney, he's here. So, it's your choice.
No, sir, I will respect my attorney and respect the board, and I will do as I was supposed to do initially, and I will have a seat because I'm ready for you to break. I am terrible, you are ready for me. I am sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. That was a misunderstanding. You'll get your chance.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rattler, you next?
Good evening, that was the board. Mr. Hendricks, Charles Bradville, the Brunswick of New Brunswick today. Wanted to follow up. On your April thirtieth meeting, you approved a contract with the Willens Law Firm. Mr. John Roth, who represents the agency, at two hundred seventy-five dollars per hour. And I wanted to ask for an update on that matter. Has it gone to litigation?
Yeah, the matter, I don't know what's going on with my mic. The matter was resolved in mediation between the parties, and that's what happened. I haven't reported to the board yet as to the settlement, so I can't disclose it, but it is resolved.
Well, I don't understand why it's not going to be discussed in public then tonight.
Because I didn't report to the board. It was a matter of litigation.
But the litigation's over now, so why can't it be expressed?
It will be, you have the appropriate time.
Which will be when?
Probably the next meeting, meaning the July meeting.
Okay. Well, I have concerns about this board keeping things quiet, keeping things secret from the public. So, this matter was something that we saw coming. There was a contractor who was not delivering. There was a dispute. The work was supposed to have been done by the end of two thousand seventeen. You informed me at the last meeting, and it got to the end of two thousand eighteen, and work was not closer to being completed. So, then we brought in this lawyer who is representing not just the board, but the parking authority and the city in this matter.
No, no, no. In this litigation, it was simply the board's counsel to handle our potential lawsuit against the contractor and the contractor's successor. And we threw them off the job, and they threatened to sue us, and we knew there was vulnerability on both sides, so we went for mediation, and we worked it out. It's not finalized yet, but some of the projects were underway, so they were authorized to complete. Some projects were not yet started, and we're going to bid, rebid those in the July meeting. And that's where we stand right now.
Okay. And I think the public deserves to know. Can you tell us which projects have, has the work resumed and which projects are being
We'll tell you. So, the work is being completed at New Brunswick High School, New Brunswick Middle School, and the Central Office Administration Building. And we are currently put out the bid, the work to be done at Redchild School, Paul Robison School, and Roosevelt School.
Okay. And who is the company that's actually doing this? Because originally, the vendor was NBS Energy Partners, but I was given the names of two other companies.
Yeah, they assigned it, they had a right under the contract, apparently, to assign it to another company. So, they did it on their own without our permission, but they could under the original contract.
And that company is Onyx?
Hmm?
And the name of that company is Onyx?
I'm sorry, I missed that. The name of, which company?
The company that NBS Energy Partners assigned this job to?
No, the, the, the new contractor that it was assigned to is called Green Street Power Partners.
Okay, that was the other company, and they're the ones out of Stanford, Connecticut.
Correct.
Okay. And this other company, Onyx, what did they have to do with the project?
Onyx was the company that was delivering the pre-contractor that was doing the, who completed what I call the first two phases. Okay. So, Onyx is the one who was actually transferred into Green Street Power Partners. You have two different, you have companies that supply power, and then you have the companies that actually build it. So, NBDPS, NBS Energy Partners is the company who's in the energy business, and Onyx was the contractor.
Gotcha. Okay, so I think I learned a little bit more. I guess, it's interesting to hear about the conference center that ESCNJ is doing. Can I just know where that'll be located specifically?
The bright beginnings, school.
Miss Galloway? Okay. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening. I think there's a lot of good things that are happening here, and I would love for the board to take a step televising the meeting so people at home can know about it. You know, if some chance I don't make it, you know, it'll still get recorded, and I hope it'll do that one day.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. There are any other comments from the public? Please state your name and your address.
I guess, Dwyane Shank, Spotsboro, New Jersey. To the board members, Superintendent Johnson, Superintendent, administrative teachers, parent professionals, specialists, cafeteria workers, the stonies, students, parents, security, retirees, teachers of the year, grandparents, families, and friends. First, to my pleasure, the serving of the year as parent professional in our district under the leadership of Principal Jerry Smith and Vice Principal Erica Campbell, prayer for growing up to New Brunswick High School, my student design, as we can come to a close of another school year. As some resources, we thank God for another safe run at New Brunswick, and pray for those around the world who are not as fortunate. Just aside, my father James Shank was a graduate of New Brunswick High School in nineteen forty-five, playing professional musicians with Duke Youngton, Al Bates, Joe Gordy, Clark Cherry, Miles Davis, Henry Gangcon, Max Roach, and many others. And I was taught that life is too short to let those things make us divide us, overwhelm us. We have more in common or alike than we do differences, no matter what race, gender, ethnicity, creed, religion, or color. All of us are blessed twenty-four hours a day, one thousand four hundred forty minutes, or eighty-six thousand four hundred seconds. Now, I only have a minute sixty seconds in it, didn't pick it, didn't choose it, but it'd be a shame for me to misuse it. Let us be selfish learners and immerse by preparing, empowering, and inspiring. We can choose it to bless the many people as we can so that we don't lose it. May God continually, abundantly bless all of us with our eighty-six thousand four hundred, and may we use it to be a blessing to all people we come across. And may we, as adults, learn to be more loving, patient, caring, versatile, and kind. God bless you and keep you as our prayer. Do a wonderful job this year, let us continue as we move forward.
If there are any public comments, you may approach the microphone. Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda item. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Sevian?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis?
Uh, yes, I'm standing on page twenty-one.
This is the consent agenda.
Mr. Spencer?
Oh, hi.
Good. Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, the Finance Committee report. Mrs. Sadowski?
I need a motion to accept the Finance Committee report for June eighteenth.
Mr. General?
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Sevian?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis?
Yes, I'm standing on page twenty-one.
So noted. Mr. Spencer?
Yes, I'm standing on page twenty.
So noted. Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, the resolution for closed session, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA ten, colon, four dash six, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: personnel matters and matters of attorney-client privilege. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and the minutes of said closed session discuss, discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. We are in closed session. Resolution?
Motion.
Please, for closed sessions.
Second. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Sevian?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Noted.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.